Moving season's starting to wrap up now. It's winter time before you know it. We're starting to get votes on all the salt, everything else for this upcoming winter. Also in the process, we got the courtyard winterized this past week. And also, we pulled all seats over and we have all the buildings out in the park for winterizing. We give all the salt out there, the infirmary, everything. So also been busy with disinfecting, a lot of extra disinfecting of classrooms, hallway, gymnasiums, locker rooms. Still getting some new equipment coming in that we've ordered back in March and April. That has been on back order. Have one be delivered Wednesday and hopefully some more. I got three more coming in the next week or two. So been busy with trying to keep up on that. Our ladies in the office done a great job on this. Knowing there's high absenteeism, we've been really hitting those rooms up a lot. Or if anyone's been quarantined for any reason. But we've been also hitting up all those areas extremely, a lot more than normal. We had some wifi equipment that Mr. Schaefer was involved with Mr. Countryman on getting up for wifi on the buses. Six of those units came in and we installed five of them on five of the buses and we have one left. There, you guys have ordered a new bus. I think it's delivered in December and we'll install that one when the new bus comes in. So kids will be able to use the wifi equipment going to and from ball games and that routes. If you're on the route for an hour, they can work on homework and everything. So also been busy with the building addition going on around back. There's a lot of, seeing a lot of progress right now. A lot of the walls are being put up. Everything's getting enclosed on top. The roofs are being put up. Having meetings at least weekly, sometimes more often with individual contractors. Also in the process of getting quotes from different companies. There's some stuff that the school's responsible for. That's not, I mean, not part of the contractor's responsibility. And I've been getting quotes from different companies and working with them on trying to get things tightened up so we can have like the Terry numbers for cameras, access controls, things along those lines. So it's been busy with all that kind of stuff.
We appreciate all your work. I know the building project and all adds to it and we appreciate your guys' work out there.
For sure.
And do the students know the wifi is available now on the bus?
Um.
I let, I let Mrs. Eide know.
Yeah, I don't know.
She let the bus drivers know so they could pass on, I'm not sure if that ever circulated or not. I know one of them did because one of the bus drivers tried to get on her own phone.
You just did that last week too, right?
Yeah. She said a couple of students had issues logging on. I tried, I told them try to log on again, you know, next day.
It should automatically do it because Mr. Schaefer has it set up for the kids. They don't have to do anything. They don't have to enter a password. It just automatically will connect for them.
That's great.
But I should send them an email. I'll do that.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Um, Mr. Slattery, we will start with you.
All right. Good evening. First off, shout out to all the students and staff working through the COVID-19 situations we're dealing with every day. They've been great in making adjustments and, you know, doing what it takes to remain safe at Hicksville. I mean, we're not perfect every day, but I tell you what, the staff and the students are doing a great job and I appreciate, you know, being where we're at because you hear about the nightmares in some schools and some areas and I'm glad we're not struggling with those opportunities. Kids are doing a great job. Currently, just a few new things. I'm working with the Northwest Ohio ESC Business and Advisory Committee. It's much like the APT program that we developed here at Hicksville. We're trying to bridge that gap between high school and the workforce and trying to assist the four county area in finding better employees. And I'm looking forward to how that evolves. Parent teacher conferences, those will be October 21st and 22nd, this Wednesday and Thursday. They will be virtual. Teachers are inviting parents to individual and team meetings. And then we just sent a link out to all of our parents for the opportunity for parents to also schedule meetings in grades five through eight. We have no school on Friday, October 23rd because of parent teacher conferences. Other things going on around here, teacher evaluations are underway and of course that's keeping us pretty busy around here. Graduation seals are being created by Mr. Mike Blue, myself and Mr. Andy Hunter. We're actually working with the ESC. These graduation seals are something that we probably hit on a little bit last year before the pandemic hit. But they're changing the graduation requirements again, starting with the class of 22 and moving forward. And the class of 22 has an additional option. Okay? So technically they're still under the 18 points they must earn. But if they do not earn those 18 points, now they can score an accept, I guess, earn an acceptable score of, of, I think, a three or higher on ELA 2 and Algebra 1. And then they must earn at least two seals. Two seals can be earned either the state seals, which are potential requirements, or a local seal, which we can create three. We're working on creating the three local seals. So hopefully those will be completed and ready for the board to be viewed in December. That's our goal. And then those will be required with the class of 2023 and beyond as of today. And then of course, you know, in the classroom, we continue to stress the importance of practicing remote learning best practices while on campus with our students. And I know Mr. Alpin's going to talk a little bit more about that, so I'm going to give him the opportunity to do that. And just a reminder that the end of the first quarter is Friday, October 30th. And I can't believe we're almost a fourth of the way through the school year. It's going way too fast. Thank you.
Mr. Alpin.
Picking back off of parent teacher conferences, some of our middle school teachers are hosting these parent teacher conferences, but then also having office hours during downtime where parents can just zoom in and ask them questions here and there. We're also going to do that with the middle school principal having office hours during, so they can zoom in and ask us questions as well. Going back to remote learning, in preparation for a possible school shutdown, our middle school hosted Remote Learning Days and I believe the high schools. This in the future. Remote Learning Days was an event where our teachers were placed outside the classroom and taught their students remotely. So our middle school teachers use Padlet, Zoom, Google Classroom and other platforms. And they taught engaging and successful lessons. Many teachers tried new platforms to practice and some worked on perfecting the platforms already know. For example, Mrs. Taylor, she tried piloting two programs. One was GoFormative and the other one was Seesaw. She learned that she really enjoyed GoFormative, but Seesaw was not one that she enjoyed. Mrs. Bossman perfected her skills and did a wonderful job. She used Zoom, Google Slides and Kahoot. And she was able to teach Zoom and use a Kahoot simultaneously for her students. So it was almost like she was right there in the classroom doing a Kahoot with her kids. And then she's able to put them in breakout rooms inside the Zoom and they work collaboratively on questions that they repaired with Google Slides. The students were completely engaged through remote lessons. It was pretty neat. Our next step as a middle school is to have our teachers use these remote tools and teach blended learning style classes. So they would basically use these tools and make their face-to-face instruction, I guess, better, make it more efficient by using things like Kahoot and Google Slides and Google Classroom. Make their face-to-face instruction better. Thank you.
I didn't see a quick note from the governor today online that he was talking about more schools happening to go remote, but thankfully they still weren't at a position where they were going to issue a statewide mandate, which we like. We like leading it with the home school. Right? Yes. Well, and you know, we've talked before, you know, what goes on in other parts of the states or bigger cities is not all, you know, necessarily what's going on here. So good to hear that from the governor today. All right. I do not have a four county report, so moving on with the superintendent's report.
Yeah. We had our first two-hour delay September 5th because of fog. As Eric mentioned, progress in the building out back continues, no issues. They indicated at our last meeting that we should be under roof well before winter hits. Then this next part that I want to talk about is COVID and that we've had two positive cases in the building since the start of the school year. One was a staff member and one was a student. Quarantine for both of those have been completed and all the people except for one are back to either work or school. We do have another staff member that's currently quarantined due to an exposure outside of the building. And they'll be out for the next two weeks. I wanted to mention to parents that the letter that is sent out, there's a letter that gets sent out every time we have a positive case. And everybody in the district gets that letter. This letter is mandated by the Health Department. It states to all parents and students in the district that there has been a confirmed COVID case within the building. It does not mean your child hasn't. It is simply an informative letter to keep our parents and students updated. There is a second letter sent to anyone who had direct exposure to the person who tested positive. So what I do is I gather the seating charts that are kept by all the teachers, bus drivers in the lunchroom, identify where the student is, if it's a student, and send that information to the Health Department. Then they call all those people that are identified on that chart that I provide them and determine if they need to be quarantined or not. And in most cases, that would be if someone sits within six feet of an infected person for more than 15 minutes, they're most likely going to have to quarantine. People on the seating chart who are six feet away or more would not be required to quarantine and would not receive that second letter. So that second letter only goes to the people that are basically within six feet of that infected person. I know the past masks are a pain for all of us. I want to say that the students are doing awesome with the masks, even though I know they don't like them either. If the masks keep, help to keep, I'm kind of reading this part that I wrote. If the masks help to keep our cases low, then it's worth wearing them. Personally, I hate them. And I, but I have no problem wearing them every day to keep us here. I encourage all of our parents and students to stick with us through this pandemic and wear the masks. I can say that there are other districts who have not pushed the whole mask thing like we have. And I know for a fact that there are numerous cases at those schools and several of them are contemplating going to remote learning because of so many cases. I know none of us want that. No students want that, no parents, no staff. So please wear the mask to help keep our cases low, in an effort to help keep our cases low. I'll do everything in my power to keep us in this building. The more cases we have, the harder it will be for me to do that. Our biggest issue would be if numerous staff members get COVID and have to quarantine because the subs in, across the land, not just Hicksville, but everywhere, are so limited that it wouldn't take but a few staff members to be out and we wouldn't have enough subs to cover the, cover the rooms. That would cause us to have to shut down quicker than a bunch of students having it. So, you know, maybe it would be, for example, if that did happen, it might be for, we'd have to shut down for like a two-week period till those people come out of quarantine and can come back. Hopefully that doesn't happen though. I do meet every two weeks still with a county nurse and the other superintendents in the county to discuss issues and, and/or questions that we have. So that's been an ongoing thing, so I'm thankful for that. The last item that I want to mention is that the USDA has extended the free breakfast and lunch program through the end of June.
That's amazing.
Yeah. So all students are eligible for a free breakfast and lunch every day. So this is a big savings for families that have multiple children. This does not waive the school fees though, so people would still need to fill out the free and reduced lunch form to see if they qualify for free school fees. So if you have questions about that, be sure to contact me at my office or Anita and we can answer any questions that parents may have about that. But that's, that's huge to, you know, some of our, any family really, but somebody that's got three or four kids and they eat here every day, that's a big savings for them.
That is huge.
So it's really, really good for, for them, so.
So I have one question.
Yeah.
Of a student who had the COVID and if you can't answer this, that's okay. But do you feel like the Health Department notifying the six-feet individuals that they were, do you feel like that was done in a timely manner?
I do. I, I will say though, Jen, that if you're probably referring to some kids that showed up the following day, that.
Oh, I, no, I'm, I'm just, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I do.
I just wondered if, you know, they were able to notify, I mean, because that could potentially be a, a lot of people that they would notify.
Right.
So just concerned on how.
In the one case that we've had with a student, I got that information. It was, it was a really crazy day and getting that stuff all around, all the seating charts. It was the first time that we had one with a student, so I wanted to make sure I didn't make a mistake. And so by the time I got them to the Health Department, it must have been like 2:00 or 2:30. And they called all of them that night. Now, there were about three, I think, that, three or four that they weren't able to get a hold of. So those kids showed up the next day and by the time we realized it, we got them, brought them down to the office and then contacted the parents. And I actually drove them home with the school car so the parents, they were, they were working. So it was older kids, so it was okay. And then, and so then they knew then at that time that they were needed to quarantine. In that particular case though, that, that didn't last that long, the quarantine, because they had actually been here. It's kind of weird. They don't do the contact tracing based on when you get the test results back. The contract, contact tracing is done based on when they show their first symptoms of potentially having something. So I, if somebody happens to have it, in this particular case, this student had no symptoms. They thought they had a cold, something like that. They didn't even think a thing about it. It was not until someone in their family tested positive that they had to then get tested and found out they were positive. So then when they went back to when they thought the symptoms started, it was, it was really, the two-week time was already up because they didn't, you know, they didn't even know they had it. We still have them quarantined for a certain amount of time and then also the kids that were around this particular person, we had to have them do the two-week time, but it didn't really wasn't, ended up, didn't end up being two weeks because part of that quarantine time was already done while they were here in the building. I hope that makes sense. I'm not trying to confuse everybody.
Yeah, no, it does.
It, I had some questions on that from not just parents, but staff members as well. But that's the reason. So it's, the contact tracing is done from the time the symptoms start, not when you get the test results back.
Well, I'm really glad to hear that the Health Department was able to contact all of those people that day.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Well, it's not really as many as you think because in most cases, this was obviously, I said it's an older kid, so they do the different classes throughout the day. So I gathered all of those seating charts. In most cases, it was kind of the same kids because their schedules are similar. And so it worked out that it really wasn't a huge amount of kids. I think it was, I think it was 14, 13 or 14 other kids that had to quarantine. So.
They were all the same grade level.
Yeah.
And we had them all sitting in alphabetical order in classes. So all of those kids who were in the same classes in the same alphabetical order.
Minimized how many people.
Yeah. And I thought the Health Department did a good job too. I know I was on the phone a couple of times. And the biggest issue that I think we had was when they were calling parents via voicemails, parents would check the voicemails. So the kids came the next day and we never got called. You call a parent, all I have is voice call to check it. Then you just, and it's a mistake.
Yeah. And, and there were a couple of the, of the kids, they didn't, there were a couple of the kids that they didn't, they weren't even by this person. For example, our bus drivers have, we, they have to have assigned seats for every kid on the bus. So these kids are on their list. If they would ride the bus, this is where they sit, but they hadn't ridden the bus all year. So we learned some things too, that, you know, if they don't, if they aren't a regular rider, get them off of the list because I sent them in as somebody that was, yeah. And they, they didn't because they weren't even on the bus. So we learned some things the first time through too and hopefully we don't have to have it again. But chances of that are slim, so.
I have a question about the free breakfast lunch.
Uh huh.
Okay. How does that, how is that working for us with cafeteria funding? Is our cafeteria making the same amount of money with that, Mike? Or how does that work?
It actually, the free reimbursement through the government is a little bit higher than what we collect on regular meals. So it's the same amount of meals served, we get a little bit more money.
Okay.
It's a good thing for the school too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because are more kids eating?
I don't think it's, it's been as much as I thought it would be. You know, I'm not sure though if parents know. I mean, I've sent out a couple of information things about it, knowing that it's there till at least the end of December. This week I've got it in my article going out again on Wednesday and I'll send another letter out to parents as well, saying that it's been extended to the 31st, so, the 30th of June. So anybody that's listening, be sure to share that with your friends. And when we put that out, it goes to Facebook and Twitter and all that, which is, you know, pretty powerful. I mean, they watch that all the time, it seems like. So I think sometimes when they, you know, this may sound bad, but if you get a letter and, because the one day I sent it out, and we try to send those letters out at like four o'clock, and I, and I'll just say this publicly, why? Because if we send it out at three, the phone starts ringing like crazy. And parents read the first sentence or two of this big, long letter and think that there's this outbreak of COVID at the school. So instead of reading the whole letter to the, explains everything, they panic in a way and call. And, and so I, I hit send on that instead of scheduling it for four o'clock and it went out at like 3:15. And yeah, the phone kind of blew up for me up there, but we took care of them and, and that, but usually if people would take the time to read the whole letter, it explains everything in there, so.
I thought it was a really good letter. I did think it explained it well.
Yeah. And I have to send that, Jen, every time. So if I had somebody identified every day, I have to send that letter every day. So parents, just so you know. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to minutes and financials, we need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Minda, Galen, thank you. Minutes from the regular board meeting on September 21st, 2020. And then Treasurers Consent Agenda Items. Cash Reconciliation as of September 30th, 2020. Financial Statements for September 2020. Approve the amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2021 as presented. Total general fund resources of $14,105,794.93. And total resources for all funds of $18,925,933.24. Approve the amended fiscal year 2021 permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $11,670,685.51. And total appropriations for all funds of $14,664,059.24. Approve the following academic, athletic, building, construction project change orders as follows. Number one, for $44,017 for Stormwater Basin. Number two, $14,099 for Roof Flashing. Number three, $21,132 for Storm Sewer Underbuilding. Number four, a negative of 82126 for Foundation Revisions. Number five, $2,965.60 for Unstable Soils. And number six of $2,012.50 for Steel Lentils. And then accept the following donations, 200 from Marlin and Natasha Iker for Girls' Basketball. Discussion, Mike?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to give a quick, a little change to what was there. Discovered, as I originally put together my part of the agenda, I was figuring that change order number six, the steel lentils, is going to actually be a change order, but they ran it through the system as a cash allowance. In other words, the, the original bid had $75,000 of cash allowance, kind of a slush fund, if you may say. And so they applied that amount to the cash allowance and therefore I would like that to be, strike that and no longer be a change order.
Okay.
Also, in addition to what's there, just wanted to note too, I mentioned last month that we had, that the Bureau of Workers' Comp was looking to approve a rebate for the 2019 policy year and that has happened. So they have approved it. Checks are supposed to be going out like late October, so we should be receiving that money, probably about 19-some thousand dollars for us. So, yep, that's good news. That's all I have unless you've got some questions.
Okay. I wondered about one. On page 13, what is the restoration grant?
Page 13. It's Title 6B Restoration. The Fund 516.
Yes.
That is.
Is that part of title?
Would be part of Special Ed, IDEA. A couple of years ago, the government came back and stated that they basically underfunded IDEA Special Education. And so essentially two years' worth of underfunded is now being provided. I, I think unfortunately it's not the exact same uses that would have been originally with the grant, but there are related special education areas. And we have, this year, we need to spend about $36,000 at least. And then there's an additional $30,000 extra, should take that back. We spent about $13,000 at the end of last fiscal year. Out of a total of these will be about 66,000. So this year we need to spend the rest of the original allocation of 36, of which 12 is already gone, 1213. And then there's, there was the second allocation of $30,000 and we have to spend that by the end of next year. So total of $66,000 of that, 6B IDEA Restoration.
I love your exact answer when I had to call and ask for it in advance. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Okay. Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur and Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes for with one absent. I need a motion for employment of certified staff. Staff, thank you.
I'll second.
Minda?
Recommend to approve the retirement resignation from Sharon Kreitz as classroom teacher at the conclusion of the 2021 school year. Recommend retirement resignation from Sharon Kreitz as classroom teacher at the conclusion of the 2021 school year. Recommend to approve the retirement resignation from Marilyn Leon as classroom teacher at the conclusion of the 21, 2020, 21 school year. Recommend to accept the resignation from Emily Reese as Junior High Student Council Advisor. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2021 school year. Dave Blue, Assistant Boys Basketball Coach. Mackenzie Coleman, Co-Assistant Junior High Girls Basketball Coach and Co-Head Junior High Girls Basketball Coach. AJ Klausing, Head Junior High Boys Basketball Coach and Student Council Middle School. Ryan Meiser, Assistant Girls Basketball Coach. Emily Roedash, Extra Vocal Duties. Recommend to approve Cassie Brown as a substitute teacher for the 2021 school year. Well, I would like to be the first to say that those three teachers retiring are going to be some mighty, mighty big shoes to fill. They were all amazing and beloved teachers here and we really are going to miss them.
For sure. And I was just sitting here thinking about it. Combined, their combined years is over, probably over 100 years of, with the three of them together, which is pretty amazing really. So, yeah. I'll still see one of them every day.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methbin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes for with one absent. Okay. Need a motion for employment of classified staff?
I'll move.
Galen, thank you. Staff, thank you. Steph, thank you. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2021 school year. John Deal, Freshman Boys Basketball Coach. Lisa Early, Cheerleading Assistant. Pete Figgins, Assistant Wrestling Coach. Christine Steeman, Co-Assistant Junior High Girls Basketball Coach and Co-Head Junior High Girls Basketball Coach. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2021 school year. Tiffany Baird, Volleyball. Natalie Briski, Basketball. Alexa Monroe, Basketball. Jeff Ruoff, Wrestling. Jeff Sleisman, Basketball. Jay Souls, Wrestling. Bailey Tier, Basketball. Bob Weatherhead, Basketball. Clark Zartman, Basketball. Recommend to approve a rate of $15 per hour for a substitute nurse effective October 19th, 2021. Recommend to approve Cassie Brown as a classified substitute for the 2021 school year. Questions or comments?
People who are volunteers, that's pretty awesome.
Yeah.
Because even when you're a coach and you're getting paid, the number of hours you put in, you feel like you're volunteering, but these people truly are, that's amazing.
Yeah.
We're very thankful.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Methbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. And motion passes four with one absent. Do we have any old business? To note of note, okay, we're going to move on to the addendum to services and agreement. I need a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Mindha and Galen, thank you. Recommend to approve a memorandum of understanding by and between the Hicksville Teachers Association and the Hicksville Exempted Village Schools. Should say as presented, we all received a copy of that. And roll call?
Was that motion by you, Mindha?
Mindha and Galen.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur? And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Four with one absent. And then, any discussion, guess, pretty slim here. We are going to go into executive session for number one regarding appointment, employment, dismissal, et cetera. But before we do that, we will not be taking any action after that meeting, but I did want to mention that we are moving back our board meeting for November to November 3rd. So that will be, I believe, the, sorry, not on November 3rd.
23rd.
23rd, sorry. I have 23rd written, I thought that's what I said. Moving back to the 23rd of November at 5:30. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move.
Say 6:10. Steph? Roll call, please.
Mr. Methbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion moves four with one absent. Okay, we will go into executive session at 6:10.